Hello, I'd like to call our February Regular School Board Meeting to order. I'd like to entertain a motion to allow Mr. Tony Jones to join us by phone.
I so move.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion's carried. I'd like to welcome all the visitors and our viewing audience. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Yvonne Givens and invocation by Dr. Tally.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for an opportunity to come together to summon ourselves and as we come, the minute we need tonight, God, we just pray that you would bless those families devastated by the earthquake, as well as many who are local, as well as in ministry, who are in the hospital and who have just been released. And we just pray that you would give comfort. Also, a special prayer for the homeless who are just suffering this thing in tremendous way. And we thank you for your mercy and your compassion in showing us the way. Now, God, as we come, pray that you would bless this great community, bless our families. Thank you for wonderful young people. Oh, God, bless this board tonight that will continue to make decisions that will positively impact our young people. These blessings we ask and do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to entertain a motion to convene the closed session.
I so move.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move the board convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters: Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment and reassignment of employees of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Convene the closed session.
Hi, Barry Nelson here, Nelson Kia Subaru. We've got new cars. Hadn't been able to say that in a while, but we've got them. Got a brand-new 2023 Crosstrek Limited. That's got everything. That's our best seller. Got a brand-new 2023 Outback Touring in dark mahogany. That's a beautiful color, brand-new color for the year. Come by and see it. Got a brand-new 2022 Ascent. We'll give you a deal. We're gonna knock $5,000 off. Come get it while it lasts. Got a brand-new Kia Niro Touring that's loaded. It's a hybrid. This car gets 46 miles to a gallon when it uses gas. Got a brand-new Niro EV. That means no gas, only a Nelson Kia where everybody knows cars cost less.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Do I read that right? Yes, she does.
Whereas, the Martinsville City School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Martinsville City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed session to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session was heard, discussed, or considered. Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
I so move.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion's carried. We have any registered speakers?
Yes.
Oh, come on up. Can I give you these cards?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have another one? Can you? Well, we'll make copies for Mr. Jones.
I have another one.
For Mr. Jones and Mr. Wood.
I'm gonna take him.
Okay. And Mr. Woods.
This section of the board meeting provides citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia the opportunity to discuss matters which are not listed on the front-end agenda. And that the school board meetings are broadcasted on Martinsville government television. The school board is responsible for the content of the programming. Thus, any person wishing to bring a matter to the board's attention under this section of the agenda should, one, come to the podium, state their name and address; two, state the matter that they wish to discuss and what action they would like for the board to take; and three, limit their remarks to five minutes, and refrain from making any personal references or accusations of factual, false, or malicious nature. Only citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia or persons having children enrolled in the city's school system or persons employed by or enrolled in the school system may address the board.
With all of that said, how are you?
I'm doing all right. How y'all doing?
Good.
Good. My name's Ebony Allen. I'm a Martinsville resident. And I'm here to discuss some things. I run a company called EA Dreams. And so at EA Dreams, we offer training for basketball and also for other sports, like volleyball, soccer, softball, baseball. Currently, I am a Martinsville resident. I left after graduating from Law Park High School in 2004, and I returned after 18 years, particularly for my passion of basketball. So my goal here in Martinsville is to increase sports participation, especially for girls' sports. My organization is committed to not only providing quality basketball training, but also helping athletes enhance and develop fundamental skills to become a better athlete. I offer my trainings to all surrounding areas, and obviously here in Martinsville. I would like to share some additional information about some of the upcoming events we're gonna be having. So first, tryouts for the spring and summer AAU program that I'm gonna run will be held at Christ Church in Martinsville on February 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This will be for boys and girls, 7th through 12th grade. We're also gonna be having some free basketball clinics, starting March 20th. Kids ages 5 and up to college level will have the opportunity to attend. Because the clinics are free, there'll only be a limited spots available. So we just wanna keep that in mind. But any additional information, you can go to my website at www.DreamsWithTheZ, the number four, sports.com. And please, take a look at it, and thank you for your time and looking forward to the participation and partnering with the community.
So where are these held? Where are the clinics held? At the same place?
The clinics will be at the same place, at Christ Church. And that, I believe that is also its 1425 Spruce Street Extension. But we're gonna be doing tons of stuff all summer, and so I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to bettering our athletes, 'cause we need it. We need it, especially here in this town.
Well, thank you, and thank you for returning to Martinsville. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's the former Christian church, right? It used to be Martinsville Christian?
I don't know.
The Christian school?
Christian school, yeah. So the gymnasium is where?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So next, Callie Heitler. Community, good job, community focus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Of course, as we all know, February is Black History Month. And so this evening for our community focus, we're gonna have some information on FAHE, the Fayette Area Historical Initiative. I think classes from most, if not all, of our schools are planning field trips to FAHE this month. And initially, originally, we are gonna have FAHE's executive director, DeShanta Harrison, come present, but her son is playing in his last basketball game. And it got rescheduled, so she had to take off. So, in her place, if I can use sports lingo, we're making a last-minute substitution. Standing in for Ms. Harrison is MMS principal, Ms. Amma Waller.
Okay. To talk about FAHE?
Yes. We're just gonna roll with this.
Okay, we'll go with it. I'll put some facts on it, so we're good.
Got the ambushes.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so yes, I am Amma Waller. I am here to accept the award on behalf, no, I'm just kidding. I'm here in place of DeShanta Harrison, and I did not mind because I've been talking to DeShanta Harrison the last couple of weeks, because our school is planning on attending. When she became executive director, she just reached out, shared some things that they're doing, and also stated, overall, I think one big thing to remember is that you can come visit at any time. It doesn't just have to be Black History Month. They're always open to the public. And on the little brochure, you can see their days of operation are on the back. They're open Wednesdays from 10:00 to 6:00, Thursdays and Fridays, 10:00 to 4:00, and the first and third Saturdays from 10:00 to 3:00. But she is very willing to work with the schools. If you wanna come on another day, they will come in if you just schedule in advance. In particular, they already have some group tours scheduled with the Boys and Girls Club Program. Albert Harris's Boys and Girls Club site is coming, attending actually this Thursday and Friday. The Teen Center, which Martinsville Middle School is a part of, will be attending February 23rd. And Patrick Henry's site will be attending February 27th and 28th. Then, they have some city school groups that will be attending. Patrick Henry's kindergarten class is going February 24th at 1:00 p.m. Martinsville High School is attending February 27th at 10:00 a.m., and they're going in different groups. And then the middle school, we are attending February 28th, one side of the 7th grade, and then March 1st, the other half is attending. And we'll be going three groups per day. They'll be going during those blocks. Other upcoming events that FAHE will be rolling out is Once Upon a Time, A Village of Fed, which they will have a showing and a dinner at New College at NCI on February 21st. And this will begin at 6:00 p.m., and if you would like to attend, you do need to RSVP to Erica McDaniel at NCI. So again, that is February 21st. The event is called Once Upon a Time, A Village on Fed, and you RSVP to Erica McDaniel at NCI. On February 26th, a program called History and Legacy of African-American Churches, and we know we have plenty of those in this area, will be at P and H and C C, so at Patrick Henry Community College on February 26th at 3:00. And this is in conjunction with MHC, Historical Society and the College. And then, if you look in the brochure, this museum or initiative goes all the way back. It was established in 2004, and it is a local grassroots organization formed for the purpose of creating a living institution that celebrates our local history, past, current, and our future history of the Fed Street corridor and its surrounding communities. And I could say, as an educator, we want, and a former Martinsville graduate, we want our students to know of their history and know the value and the things that we have participated, from the German Ball to our place with the railroads and even certain injustices like the Martinsville Seven that occurred. And just knowing where we came from, so where we are going. They're doing a great job in welcoming our students and the community in. So, share the love, share the brochure. She left some extras. And I'm pretty sure teachers will roll this out, or their principals will roll this out on their memo. I'm pretty sure Callie will come by and take some great pictures of them attending those events, and we could post some stuff up on our new webpage. Any questions?
I noticed in here where in 1968, Albert Harris High School becomes an elementary school. Is brown. So, just a little familiar with FAHE and that initiative. They have some pictures of my papa up there. He started Imperial Savings in Long Bank. And so, DeShanta, I think with everything that she brings to the table, that she's gonna be great for that organization. We wish her well and, you know, look forward to some partnership with her.
I do too.
While we look forward to that, young people coming through. I know that several seemed to be very excited last week when they talked about it, so it should be great.
Do you know, do you have any information on becoming a member?
No, I think if you go on the site, or they have some applications there, but I'm pretty sure we'll also give her the mail something instead of mail.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for stepping in. Thank you. So next, for awards and recognition, we have School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And we just wanted to show our school board clerk, Mayanna Smith, and deputy clerk Jill Collins appreciation for everything you do for taking care of us. And you not only take care of us, you take care of Dr. Tally too, and our local school. Ma, this is, yes. So we just wanted to thank you both for a job well done, and we just have something for you.
Thank you so much, and these ladies work so hard. We really appreciate your hard work.
So next, it's School Board Appreciation Month, presented by Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. I'm happy to announce that, of course, this month is also School Board Appreciation Month. We will join today with school divisions all throughout the state of Virginia to celebrate this wonderful occasion of School Board Appreciation Month. There are almost 850 elected and appointed school board members across the Commonwealth of Virginia, and all of these will be recognizing the great dedication and service to public education and to our young people. The theme of this year's celebration is rising to the challenge. When I look back and reflect on our school board, they constantly, consistently meet the challenges of our young people and the needs of our community, and for that, we're just very thankful. Local school board members, as they serve their divisions and advocate for public education, and certainly because of all the politics now, it becomes application with state, local, and federal leaders. The foundation for any student's success, of course, is leadership, someone being an advocate and support. As a superintendent, I'm very proud of our division, of our school board, no matter where we travel throughout the state, and they certainly deserve the recognition that they get. So at this time, I'd like to present them with a certificate also for their hard work and diligence. So if you would come down. And I wanna say, all the wonderful gifts that you receive from all the young people many prepared to put the behind the stage down so that we can see you. But I wanna thank all the administrators and the students who look forward to just doing this every year. We have a very hard-working school board, and often in our administrative retreat, we talk to our principals about the support that they give, always willing to give. I've never seen a time that I said we want to do anything for staff, teachers, that they said no. It's always been a yes, and that means a lot, because our heart is really with the young people and with the people who work for us. So, Ms. Dillard, our chairman, chairperson. Mrs. Yvonne Givens, our vice chair, and Mr. Mike Williamson. Thank you for your service, and we hope to, on behalf of all the schools, that you enjoy all of your gifts, and we, again, appreciate that great effort.
Thank you. And I neglected to say, Mr. Woods couldn't be with us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Tally, you're addicted. And next, on to information agenda, prom information, presented by Dr. Heather Cogan.
Hi, good evening. I tried to get Dr. Dixon to come model for you, but he's mad that I won't let him DJ the prom, so he wouldn't come.
Oh, is he a DJ now?
No.
He wants to be.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the students.
Maybe if we have a '70s theme one year.
Don't argue that. Don't argue that. Nothing wrong with the '70s.
Oh, no. No, there's nothing wrong with the '70s.
Nothing wrong with the '70s.
Y'all, it's a struggle with him. So I am Dr. Talbot. I am in charge of our junior/senior prom. This year, we're gonna hold the prom on Saturday, April 22nd. We run prom from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. And this year, we're doing a theme we've never done before, so we're having a masquerade ball. Yeah, so the kids are really excited about that. We try to change it up every year, and yet try to be very conscientious of the money situation for our students. So we kind of rotate through themes. So this year, we're gonna have a masquerade ball, and you guys are welcome to come and join us that night. It's always great to see the kids dressed up and having a good time and getting to socialize, not only with themselves, but with our staff as well. So I know Dr. Tally usually comes over and joins us for a little bit, so you guys are welcome to join us. We're really looking forward to it.
Where is the prom this year?
We hold the prom at Martinsville High School in our commons. We've been doing that since we renovated the building. So it's a great use for the space. It allows us to really keep the students safe. We can run our own security there. We have lots of parking, so it's really the perfect space. And we transform it for the kids, so it doesn't look like the typical cafeteria and commons that it normally is.
And I wanna issue my challenge to the board that I issue every year. Challenge everyone to spend the entire night with me there and get up to go to church. I've issued this challenge for seven years now, and so I'm waiting on someone to attend the prom with me. I will be attending the dinner with special needs students. I'll attend the prom. I'll attend the after-prom party, and I just need some company.
He'll have some company at the prom, but not after prom.
After prom, you say company the last five years.
If we can't make it that night to the prom, we always decorate and set up the Friday night before, so we can always use some extra hands.
Be glad to. So a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mr. Dixon, I think when we had spoken, he had mentioned something about dresses, that there was a dress giveaway, or?
Yes, so we run a small prom closet. We've had some folks from the community over the years that have donated some prom dresses and some suits for us. And so if a student wants to go to the prom and cannot afford that, we work with them. If we don't have something in-house to offer them that fits or that they're comfortable with, we've been lucky to have some private donors that I've been able to get in contact with, and they help get us either suits or dresses that we need. So no student that wants to go to the prom but is having trouble getting or paying for clothing, is that an issue? We also know that because we do charge, for some students, finances are an issue. So if a student is having financial trouble, they either come see me, or sometimes a teacher will let us know, and we work with some private donors to cover their cost. So, 'cause we don't want finances to be a hindrance for the kids to get to enjoy something.
Okay.
So.
And you really do transform the commons area. You told me that, and I wasn't sure I was all on board in several years ago, and it was amazing. You do a great job.
Well, thank you.
And please let Mr. Dixon DJ. Please, let him DJ.
I've already hired a former Martinsville graduate. I would hate to back out on him now.
I understand, but I'll be in touch with you. I have some dresses and things, so I'll be in touch.
Excellent. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. One more question. You used to have to pay class dues, I think, to attend. Is that still?
Yes, ma'am.
And the kids are aware of that, the students are?
Yes, ma'am. It's $50 for juniors and $20 for seniors. And that goes not only for the prom, but that also goes for class activities. Movie and pizza days, popcorn. We've done ice cream sundaes for the kids, things of that nature.
And don't they have time to pay it over the years? That's not just?
They do, absolutely. I have some students who'll pay $5 a month. Some students that'll pay, you know, $20 one year and $10 the next. So we work with our students to make sure that, like I said, if they wanna do these things, they can do it, and finances aren't a hindrance for them.
So the dues are required to attend, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Let us know what we can do, Dr. Cogan.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dixon, tell us, do you know what parent, if there are parents watching that would like to volunteer for after-prom? Could you share with us who they should contact to help out with after-prom? Or do you all have a committee?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So we have a committee, and the after-prom chair is a lady. Her name is Kia Blackwell. We have a after-prom meeting, I wanna say not this Monday, but next Monday, I believe that's February 20th. But I do have some information. I just didn't bring that with me.
I know, and I popped it up.
No, it's okay, but I can get you all some information. We've been sending things out on our Facebook page with our meeting dates and different things on it. But Ms. Blackwell, I know on our Facebook page, at least I believe so, Callie.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe we've put on there some information about after-prom.
Uh, we posted. It's not at the race track.
An interest meeting, and I think there's a contact, there was a contact on there, but I'll get you all something.
What about the place for the after-prom?
The after-prom is at Martinsville Speedway. Clay Campbell and Martinsville Speedway has been gracious enough, again, to.
I thought I read there was some conflict there with the race or something.
The date was moved.
Yeah, the date was moved. Yeah, so we can have it there, and it's gonna be great. So that's April 22nd. That's gonna be.
Dr. Tally will be there.
Absolutely. And I know somebody else is gonna come and stay with me there.
Well, Ms. Givens?
I just feel it. It's okay. Just have a feeling.
Don't put you on the spot.
I will be there.
Okay, we'd love to have you.
And I will be attending church the night of that.
And Mr. Williamson, we'd like to have you all too.
We'll look into that.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon.
Thank you, Dr. Cogan.
And next, on to the consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve minutes as presented in our January 12th meeting. Also, approve the minutes presented in our January 30th meeting, which was the public hearing for the budget, and as well as approve the minutes or financial report as presented ending January 31st, 2023.
I so move.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's carried. And next, on to the action agenda. And next, on to the action agenda. Each year, um, V S B A, um, asks the local school boards to recognize local businesses that support and make contributions, whether financial, volunteering in the schools, or sponsoring field trips, or mentoring programs. This year, for consideration, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion, the Ta Omicron Chapter Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, um, Incorporated for their Q School Initiative with our young boys in the school, and then Piedmont Arts Association.
I so move.
I second.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. And next, on to, um, the fiscal year twenty-four school calendar. Um, if you've had a chance to review that, it's on the screen. I'm not sure. The viewing audience, yeah, and we have one also. If the viewing audience could change it, um, it hasn't changed that much. I think it's starting a week later, um, than this year, and we're on the same schedule as probably some of the other schools in the area.
Very close. They're not, they do not match exactly, but because of the programs that we share, they're pretty similar.
So, board members, if you don't have any questions or concerns here, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year, um, school calendar for twenty-twenty-four.
I so move.
I second.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Um, um, consideration of policies, if you've had a chance to check, and there were a lot this, this, this month, if you had a chance to check over those, it was some minor language edits, it's some updated policies, um, reflecting enactment of Virginia Code. Um, and then, again, minor cross-references updated and minor language edits. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented for the first reading.
I so move.
I second.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
And next, um, this fiscal year twenty-twenty-four school year budget, um, Dr. Tally will present.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Dillard. Thank you also, board, for recommending those businesses. They have worked with us for years. Been very supportive, uh, just outstanding toward it. Uh, again, just a few highlights from our, our budget. Uh, of course, you know, we had a first reading. We had a second reading and a public hearing. This will be our third reading, so, uh, I'll just give you again some highlights. Uh, as we go through, again, um, this is an investment in our, with our students and children in our community. Our mission statement, go ahead. Uh, again, reflection of our core values, of what we believe in. We believe in these tenants, uh, very strongly. Go ahead, Steve. Uh, our goals, again, we always use SMART goals, things that we can measure, usually, uh, reduction of things by ten percent or increase, so that we have a number that we can place with that at the end of the year. We can ascertain what it is that we've done. Go ahead. Travis, Mr. Clemens?
All right, these are our projected revenues by broad categories defined by the state. As you can see, we're projecting increases, uh, of one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, that's made up of, of four major changes. One of those is a reduction in state grants. That's because we're losing a couple of slots in the Virginia Preschool Initiative Program, and so we're losing the funding for those two positions. Uh, the state sales tax, and that's bound somewhat off of, uh, the basic aid formula, a reduction there of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And an increase in state funds, which includes things such as the additional reading specialist, uh, the state's portion of the five percent raise, and the replacement of the hygiene and food tax component that was reduced. So, that's replaced the loss and sales tax that comes to the, uh, school division. So, that's an increase in state funds of one million and ten thousand dollars. And then, in the end, when we balanced the budget, we were short, we were short three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from the balance. And therefore, that's gonna be a request of the, uh, city council to increase their appropriation, the local component of the appropriation to us of that much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, revenue factors, uh, will be enrollment. Enrollment's first stage will affect above what we projected. Uh, and we'll get a large count, so it looks like overall average will be above what we projected, which is more revenue for us. And we just appreciate the fact that the parents, uh, again, entrust us with their young people. A preschool around a hundred and ten students, adult education around eighty. So, total enrollment, uh, eighteen eighty. Uh, we're looking for state entitlement of around two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, supplement about five hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, we'll lose a little bit of money with the VIP, uh, around thirteen thousand dollars. And a total of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Now, primary costs, and we will have our insurance meeting in April. Uh, I think we put that out, it's April, March, um, around the fifteenth. And we'll know more about the health insurance. That's always a driver for us. Uh, hopefully, we can keep the cost to our employees, uh, level. Uh, we're getting five percent raise that, uh, Mr. Clemens mentioned. Uh, budgeted requested around four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and then some technical, uh, adjustments. So, we're looking at around one billion, uh, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, here are the requests, and again, you've seen them twice from the various schools. Uh, we thought were very reasonable, and again, what we did is to, to ascertain this, is to get the principals to get together with staff, teachers, boosters, who, all the people who had some type of, uh, uh, again, say in their budget overall, and then kind of tell us what they need. So, this is a wish list. Again, it's not the budget, it's a wish list. Go ahead. Uh, and again, you can see it, what each school, uh, requested, uh, and I, I felt like all of them were reasonable. Then you look at the division level, 'cause we also looked at department heads, chairmen, uh, to talk about each department. Uh, again, they, they came up with basically a million, uh, point three, uh, dollars worth of requests, and we know that that's not attainable. I, I don't think we could ever ask for a million dollars. I'd love to, uh, but we know that would be very hard. So, basically, uh, looking at school requests, uh, division level requests, around a one-point-three million dollars of requests. And so, what we had to do then is see what was important. Okay, capital, uh, Mr. Clemens?
Right, the next two slides show our capital improvement list. Uh, it's, it's not full, it's continuing, uh, always changing. Uh, but currently, these are the projects we'd like to tackle or, or in the process of taking care of. Uh, we have a couple of different funding avenues that we're taking advantage of for a few of the projects. Uh, one is an appropriation we requested of city council, and they awarded us two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars toward. That was to take care of part of the Patrick Henry roof, a repair there. Uh, some repairs of, of HVAC equipment at the Martinsville High School gym, some repairs to some doors that we need, desperately needed to replace around the division. And the students with disabilities elevators at Albert Harris. And then, as you're aware, through last year's budget process, uh, one-point-five-one-nine million dollars was added to the budget for capital improvements by the state. Currently, we, in fact, uh, this coming Wednesday at two PM, we opened the bids for the middle school roof finally. And so, we'll actually have, uh, some cost factors there to see how that budget's gonna hold. Uh, one-point-five, we, we will hopefully go a little further, but projects are very expensive right now. But in order of, of roofs to tackle, they would go in the order of Martinsville Middle School first, the main gym, and, I mean, the main classroom area, and the old section of the building, and then move on to the roof over the gymnasium. And then, um, look at Druid Hills, uh, Central Office, that roof, and then there's some more repairs to do at Albert Harris eventually as well. Uh, and then, and if there was any sustainability for past that, we would start tackling more HVAC, probably, most likely, the barge units that are at Clearview and Patrick Henry. And then, we're putting together requests for city council, but it's taking a while to get in enough quotes, uh, waiting on a couple more. We're gonna ask for two buses. Again, one was for, uh, students with disabilities with wheelchair lift, on regular bus. Uh, we want to do some other things around the campuses at the high school, uh, target some more lighting, and then again, start tackling the barge units that has, uh, prepare for, as those are aging out. Uh, let's see, and then the last piece for the middle school roof is because the middle school is in the historical district of the city. Such drawings and materials that will be used have to be presented this, uh, uh, to the Architectural Review Board. They meet once a month. Their next meeting is, uh, this Thursday. So, after the bids are open on Wednesday, we will also take, uh, uh, this up with the Architectural Review Board. Hopefully, they'll okay everything, at which point then we can approve, uh, the bids and award, contract, uh, award the project to a vendor, and then hopefully move forward, uh, before, during the summer.
And again, this is not an all-inclusive list, but does contain some real, I think, important items, such as the auditorium upgrade and repair, which is used a lot. Um, if you notice, the, the new gym is still there, because that gym has become a, a safety issue for us now. In the past, we talked about being a wish list, but to me, it's, it's essential. I want to thank, uh, TJ, Dr. Dixon, Travis, and others who helped us, uh, the past couple of weeks, because we had scaled some things, and for instance, this week, regional tournament has to be held in Magna Vista. We couldn't host it. We can't host the wrestling event, 'cause we can't really host anything regional. And so, it, it becomes a convenience thing and now a safety thing, and so, we'll continue to push that. You'll see that in the six-year plan that we're rewriting again, uh, for next year, but it will be in that six-year plan. And I think it's essential, and it's a matter of, uh, as Angela even say, equity also. So, if you look at the budget request, uh, you, you see the things that we're requesting. We took that one-point-three million dollars and kind of summarized it to things that we felt like we could afford to give and that would be essential for our use. Go ahead.
Again, there's, this is a graph, and again, it's organized by the categories dictated by the state. Uh, these are the expense categories, the first being instruction, uh, with an increase on expenses of seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. And the instructional technology component, an increase of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, for a total instructional increase of nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. And administration, that's a hundred and one thousand dollar increase. Attendance and health, fifty-four thousand, for a total of one-fifty-five, six-fifty-eight. Transportation, a three-thousand-dollar increase, uh, and its allocation, maintenance operation, a forty-thousand-dollar increase. Again, for the total of one-point-one-seven, uh, five million dollars in increases. For total bottom-line budget, twenty-five million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars.
All right, and so, our budget request, anticipated revenues, we're looking at twenty-five million dollars, uh, twenty-five-point-four million dollars, and expenditures of twenty-five-point-seven. So, the variance is what we're acting for, three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty, uh, dollars. That's what we're requesting. Uh, again, you see the breakdown of the state entitlement and what's local and, and what will come from grants and other, other funds. Uh, again, we could talk about, uh, the journey for success and the accolades. We have pages. In previous years, I've only, uh, chosen one page to stay all of this, but this was just so much. And as, uh, the cabinet and I looked at this, it was so much that, uh, Angela and I especially had to just, just cut back. Uh, even up to today, the, uh, this week reform that the, Ms. Scales and the P B I S team from the middle school, uh, have been invited to present, and we're filming a state conference. So, you know, our people are in demand everywhere to, to do presentations, and, and people coming to us from the southwest as well as the east to, to do things. And so, uh, we feel real good about our staff. We feel real good about the education that we're offering our students. And so, therefore, we're requesting three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars in additional funds to continue the success that, that we have.
Board have any questions or comments? And this is our third reading.
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four budget as presented.
I so move.
I second.
Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Next, on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, uh, real exciting year, um, couple of months, and, uh, crossing over into everything, especially, uh, in January, very busy. Uh, we attended the MLK breakfast, and NCI was wonderful. I don't know how many people were there, maybe five hundred. Uh, just a, a, a great program, um, good fellowship and talking about the things, um, that we need, you know, to just simply go forth. And of course, a lot of us were there and were able to talk personally about civil rights and so many things of, uh, MLK. So, it's a good experience. Uh, also, we met with, with Leon and Linda from, um, the city in terms of that finance, uh, department. Have sent them in advance a, a copy of the budget, proposed budget, so they'll, city council will be able to look at it. Um, met with the superintendent's, uh, team from each school, and our teachers have very, very few questions this time. Very pleased, I think, with the way the year is going, even though everybody desires a snow day. I can't, I can't quite fix that. Uh, but very pleased and, uh, working on the end-of-the-year calendar, kind of put the dates in place so people can plan around, uh, what they're doing. Had the privilege to, uh, be asked to serve as chairman on the V H S L sportsmanship committee, and, and everyone knows my strong feelings about sportsmanship. And so, presided over, um, one meeting, and, uh, it's good. I think the things of having young people compete with good attitudes and making sure, uh, there are no racial names and other things that are slurs and, and just dealing with all the young people, 'cause they're different. Uh, there's no place for it. And, uh, so, I, I was elated that Dr. Hahn, uh, reached out and contacted me and wanted me to serve as chairman. So, it's, it's quite an honor, 'cause I do value sportsmanship. I think it's the most wonderful, most wonderful things in the world, and I value it above winning. I actually do as much as I love to win. Archer Dappert, uh, a good friend, uh, and I want to thank Ms. Dillard. She didn't have to do this, and I know she didn't do it for recognition, but there, her department got together and, so, you tell it, 'cause I want you to tell. I don't want to leave anything. I appreciate you, your employer, for doing that.
Each person in our office sent a card, an encouragement card, to him, and we delivered it to him the day of the speech. I think it was the day of the speech, and he was just overjoyed. His mom sent a message to my daughter on Facebook and just said that he was just overjoyed, and they read each one of them. But it was such an honor to do that. It was just a small gesture, but it was such an honor to do it.
Well, it was so big to Archer, and, uh, was blessed to be able to be there. We had several events going on that night, so everybody was everywhere. But he did an outstanding job, and the trophy was tremendous. It's almost his size when he took the picture. Uh, but you know, Archer's a, a character, and we enjoyed him. He did an outstanding job, was first runner-up. And, and we're just so proud of him and being able to take pictures and send those back to the board. But he wanted to thank everybody. Everybody was so encouraging, and again, Ms. Cooper, I know you guys are very, very proud of him. Um, we did have a two-hour early dismissal, and we were able to talk with some parents and have some professional development, which went, uh, quite well. Uh, want to say a little bit about the VAS formula era. VAS, uh, has written a letter, talking to the B D O E about the formula era. And you've, I've seen it across the state, where the state department actually miscalculated how many funds people wanted to get. And of course, we've been putting pressure on them to make sure, since you made a mistake, then you have to rectify that by giving them some money. And so, uh, the general assembly, we've been giving an update every week, and I really feel like, uh, the general assembly is gonna make amends for this. I'm hoping by, uh, giving us that money. Of course, every school division will lose some, and, uh, Travis has already calculated, and we've talked about it in cabinet, ours, um, because of our composite index won't be as severe as some of the others. Uh, but again, we don't want to lose any money, and, and I like to lose money. I want to gain money. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna press, continue to do that politically. Some of us are going to Richmond. Um, we don't know who's gonna be selected from VAS yet, and even talk, uh, to, to our congresspeople there. Once I did have the opportunity to, uh, spend some time, uh, at Pastor Charles Woodfield's anniversary, and I mention it because, uh, his church, East Martinsville, has done things like going into the community, giving away to kids that belong to our school. And I think that's significant. A lot of churches don't reach out into schools and the subdivisions, but, uh, First Baptist East has. And so, happy anniversary to Charles, uh, Woodfield Lady, Pastor Charles Woodfield and Lady Woodfield. Uh, D L T, we had a very good, uh, meeting, uh, in terms of our data. We like where our data is, is going, but we have a lot of work. And, you know, this is the time now we can see some of the things from... And you know, this is the time that we can see some of the things from the two-year hiatus of in-person learning. And those things will begin to show up, but I'll give it to our teachers. They've been willing to accept change. They've been willing, we're not going to shuffle blame, because we don't have time for that. But we have to recapture a lot of the learning that took, would have taken place had we had our students. But of course, safety was always our number one goal, and it's always going to have to be student safety. And we're fortunate, we lost no one during the pandemic, no staff member, and no student, no, because of COVID. And a lot of divisions just simply can't say that. We had local divisions around us who did. And so the safety piece is very important, very important. And then lastly, I want to say I'm very thankful for the scholarship night that we had at the high school. We went over, when we came over, parents, I tell you, parents were tough. Parents asked very good questions, and I was impressed with that. Because you would think parents are not really thinking about that until it's time to sign the check. But we had a lot of parents there and a lot of representatives who told specifically what people could do if they wanted to get the scholarship that they represented. And so my hats off again to the guidance department, to Dr. Dixon, to high school staff, and to all the community people. We had representatives from several scholarships who came and elaborated on it. But I thank you for that, for serving our students, and now we want to follow through. And we know the harvest is a big part with the seed program, but for the other students, again, if you gain $500 here or there, that's, that's money. Get that and let those, let those things add up. Do the work, and the teachers that are at the high school that are helping students with the writing piece of it. So that's, don't back off because of that. Just go for it, and anything else we can do, let us know, and I thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. And next, matters from the board. Mr. Williamson, do you have anything? Mrs. Givens?
I was just going to give a brief report about GovSchool. We met, the GovSchool board met in January. And it's our time that we're going over a budget there as well, and the proposed budget was presented to us by Dr. Bocock. And we'll vote on that next month at our March meeting. And we also were going back through policy. There was a lot of questions by board members, some of the policies that date back to when it began in 2001, that a lot of us did not really know were in there. And so we're kind of fine tuning that and trying to make sure that we all understand what the policies are for GovSchool.
I always ask the same question, how many slots do we have at GovSchool?
We have, Dr. Tally, correct me if I'm wrong, we have 25.
Yeah, I think you said 25.
And all of ours are being used right now in Whitfield, because I believe we have 12 juniors that are in the program right now and 13 seniors. And so that'll give us 13 openings for next year.
Great, thank you.
And I think the attendance there has been so much better. Remember, last year, we had to do a lot with attendance. Students are doing a very responsible job of getting there, because it's very intensive. The school's very, and you can't really miss days.
No, and that was one of the things he did share, what the, this year is so much different, is they've realigned the classes so that they're taking things that they'll take one semester, and then they'll get something different the second semester. So in that way, it is more like college, but also that gives the kids more time just to focus on that and not have as much work throughout.
Thank you, Mrs. Givens. Mr. Jones, did you have anything? Go ahead. Mr. Jones?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, everybody.
He said, "Good job, everybody." So February 6th through 10th was National School Counseling Week, and I just wanted to recognize our counselors and let them know we appreciate everything that they do supporting our kids, and especially since COVID. I know it's been double duty, so I wanted to acknowledge that. Also had the visit, I had the opportunity to visit Martinsville Middle School and talk a little bit with Mrs. Waller, who received. Didn't Miss Waller receive an award?
Yes, Region 6, she was receiving an award for outstanding work with attendance. As you know, attendance has been a major cause of a lot of divisions not being credited, getting students there. And she's had such a great model, and it started with her predecessor also, Dr. Torkley. They've worked together on a system there, which has become like a model for other school divisions. And so she's presented already for BDOE, and I'm sure she's going to be called again to a lot of other school divisions to see what it is that they're doing, because their percentage of student attendance is wonderful. And again, that's, you know, that's another example of our people being heavily recruited to come present. So we have great staff.
So congratulations to Mrs. Waller. And while I was there, there was a lady there, Wendy, from Radford University, who was observing, tracking PBIS. And she was so impressed, and it just, I just happened to be there that day, and she was there. And she was so impressed that she asked Dr. Tally if she could share some of the initiatives that we're doing at Martinsville Middle with other school divisions. So good, kudos for that, Mrs. Waller.
Ms. Carla Scales is going to be presenting for that, PBIS in Whittfield, that middle school example. So again, another presentation that other people from the state will be attending, so again.
The students scored a 94%. She said that one of them.
Oh, wow. 94? That's great. Just so proud.
Also, I attended three webinars. When we attend, we have to report out on that also. One was Build New and Renovate, navigating the challenge of building or renovating an old school. And this, that was presented by Stanton County, Stanton City Public Schools, and it talked about the challenges of renovating, you know, obtaining funds, design, construction, review proposals. And they based their new build on class sizes, because they're a large, a larger division than ours. They based it on the number of students per class, on how they would design the school, how it would be designed. That was pretty interesting. And then the next one was how school boards can help students recover from learning during the pandemic, presented by Fairfax County, another large division. And they asked what school boards should do, and they said, "The only thing more painful than learning from experience is not learning from an experience." So I think we've taken that, and we were right there with everything they were doing. You know, they said, they talked about the cost of keeping everyone connected, and, you know, having a laptop or iPad and access to internet. And, you know, and then they talked about high dose tutoring and small, you know, to close the gap on group size, small group size training, and training tutors for two, three weeks, so. And then the last but not least, Chesterfield County presented Student Success Program, and they, their theme was All Means All. And they spoke about how important it was to direct students as they go through the school system and carriage and advanced classes, which I think we do a great job of. They offer PSAT free for grades eight through 11, and they identify problems on why kids are dropping out. If it's home problems or if it's understanding school prob, you know, school issues, they identify that and they target those, those students. They also said that they have joined in with a local group, well, a group called Conexus, to obtain eyeglasses for students in need. And they talked about how important it was to develop support with the community, with local businesses, which again, in churches, which we do a great job of. The next thing is the Blue Ridge Regional Spring Network is going to be held in May. I just wanted us to be mindful of that. There's a registration for that, and we have that information. And the topic is immerse yourself in CTI, CTE, excuse me, and we hope, you know, everyone can attend. And then Elizabeth Ewen, Director of Legal and Policy Services, has special call-in hours for board members who has any questions or concerns. And last but not least, Reed Across America is February 27th through March the 3rd. So I know we've been getting some invites, thank you, from the schools, and we hope everyone can participate. We are going to use props again this year.
Here we go.
I don't know why he makes that a competition, but we are going to use props again this year. Look forward to that. Okay. And the reminder of dates, February 20th is teacher workday, a student holiday. February 27th through 3rd is Reed Across America Week. March 7th through 8th is Fast Track. And we haven't had that since COVID, have we?
Yes, they're bringing that back, and we're excited. We've got some things in the works. And we, last year, we were, last time we had, we were first place, so, you know, competitive spirit.
March the 13th is our next regular school board meeting. And I wanted to mention for the board, April meeting has been changed. It'll be the 13th. It's on a Thursday. We're just getting back from spring break. We have any unregistered citizen comments? Any communications?
I want to say we have several staff members who've been sick or lost parents too. Everybody, what keep them? Any thoughts and prayers? Thank you, principals, for sending those to us. We always forward those to our board. So you are in our thoughts and prayers.
Also wanted to mention, Dr. Tally has sent us an email, the new website.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cali?
Cali?
Yes.
Talk about the new website.
Yes.
That's exciting. I hope I can navigate it.
We have unlimited trainings with Aptige, so no worries. But yeah, that's going to launch on March the 1st.
Oh.
If all goes well. So our, our app is live in the App Store right now. However, it's still being built out. It's live so we can, you know, take a look at it and make edits. But yeah, it's a, it's a very exciting time. I'm populating it with pictures and stuff right now, so, March the 1st.
Cali, I will be using my intercom system if I have problems.
Steve, can we take away his intercom?
And I wanted, I wanted to say something about Cali. Cali is everywhere. She is everywhere, and we're thankful for that, Cali. Because you put our kids out there in a great light, so thank you so much. But she is everywhere, all the time, everywhere.
There are a lot of great stories to be told.
And patient with me will not lie.
And patient with Dr. Tally.
As others do.
I'm you. If there's nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I surrender. Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
We adjourned, thank you.